Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I think the Commissioner Webster is on the phone, so we're going to go ahead and start. A quick call to order, the Commissioners' meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. And Commissioner Webster has now entered.
Why are you upstairs?
Well, you were on the phone when we last.
I was on the phone.
Anyway, a call to order, the Commissioners' meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 at 1:00 p.m. I would ask that you join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. If you would join me and stand for the pleasure of reading.
....................................
Thank you. Roll call.
There is no one joining us remotely.
Executive session announcement.
Yes, the three Commissioners, myself and Coroner Ray Benton, met yesterday at 11:30 a.m. on 4/1/24 for the purchase, for the discussion topic of the purchase of land.
Any public comment? Hearing none, Commissioners' comment.
I would just comment, I'm hearing that some of the local schools have closed early because of flooding and ran into a colleague in the stairs who had come from Pittsburgh and said the roads were bad. So just be careful out there. Turn around, don't drown. So, yeah, that's.
That's good.
Yeah, build an ark. That's my comment.
Okay. Proclamation. You're with 811 Dig First?
April 2024 Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month for the County of Blair. Wherefore, the month of April 2024 is recognized as Pennsylvania's 811 Safe Digging Month and the initiative sponsored by Pennsylvania 811 and a utility notification information center with over 52 years of continuous service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas Pennsylvania 811 received a million excavation notifications in 2023, over 3,000 construction projects in coordinate Pennsylvania and transmitted approximately 6 million notifications to their member facility owners and operators, allowing essential utility and construction crews to provide vital underground services and repair of critical infrastructure to communities throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas, when contacting 811 at least three business days before digging, a homeowner or a contractor is connected to a unique service that notifies the appropriate underground utility operators in the municipality in which the work will be performed. And whereas, by notifying 811 of their intent to dig, the homeowner or contractor is knowingly helping to protect the underground utilities themselves, the work crew, and their neighbors from any unsafe digging practices within their community. And whereas, upon receiving the notification from Pennsylvania 811, the facility operators and owners disperse to said work site to mark the approximate location of their underground utility lines with flags, paint, or both, to establish an 18-inch tolerance zone of the outside wall or edge of their line or facility. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Blair County Board of Commissioners, in support of the Pennsylvania Underground Utility Line Protection Law, Pennsylvania Act 287 of 1974 as amended, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month and encourage all Pennsylvanians to visit the Pennsylvania 811 website at www.pawonecall.org for information about digging safely. I make this in the form of a motion.
Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And now we'll hear the National County Government.
This is a proclamation declaring April 2024 National County Government Month. Whereas, the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 330 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas, counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives. And whereas, Blair County, Pennsylvania, and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, under the leadership of National Association of Counties President Mary Jo McGuire, NACO is highlighting county leadership through the lens "Forward Together", celebrating the role of county governments in connecting, inspiring, and leading as intergovernmental partners. And whereas, that role includes the responsibility to inspire county residents to engage with their communities and to lead by highlighting our strength as intergovernmental partners. And whereas, each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Blair County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. And we put that in the form of a motion.
A second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Would you please run us through your consent agenda?
Yes, today's consent agenda is Resolution Number 175. It's the payment of three warrant lists as outlined in your agenda in Item A. It's ratification of two warrant lists as outlined in Item B. It's one budget transfer for 2024 in Item C. And resignations and status changes as outlined in D and E respectively.
Making a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, staff reports and special business. Planning Commission, Sherry.
Good afternoon.
I'm presenting on behalf of Duncanville Borough. I'm writing a grant application for the, this is a mouthful, so. It is the DCED grant application for the PA Broadband Authority. It's for the COVID-19 ARPA funding for multi-use community facilities. With this grant application, we're going to be seeking Phase II renovations of their community center in the heart of the borough. We're up to just under $2 million, which is the max request for this grant. There is no match for this grant application. With this, we will be constructing three new private office spaces to coordinate broadband and technology access for the public to use. There are three private locations so they can do telehealth, workforce, or education for students. If they have FID days and they don't have internet access at home, they can go up to the community center and access that. Job seekers can look for jobs, apply for any workforce benefits, things, you know, with unemployment. They can do that all in those locations. Also included in this grant application is a complete kitchen, restroom, and storage renovations with additional ADA access, new kitchen appliances, the social hall meeting gathering space renovations including new insulation, new lighting, and cosmetic updates. Both interior and exterior updates including new siding, windows, doors replacement, the new canopy replacement at the entrance with additional ADA access. We will be asking for new audiovisual technology security system and additional social hall furnishings. We'll be adding a new stormwater retention system, sidewalk replacement with ADA, additional ADA accessibility, and also new McAdam topcoat for the parking lot. The Borough Council and the Borough Manager had four public outreach events, two at the senior centers located in the borough, one at the fire hall, and one at the community center. They had about 68 members come out from the public and stakeholders to provide feedback. So they were happy with that attendance. They received a lot of good feedback and options to add to the community center. And we will be submitting this grant application probably next week. Their Borough Council will submit the approval on Monday evening, or is expected to submit the approval Monday evening. So we're just asking for a letter of support from the Commissioners for this grant application.
Any questions or comments of Sherry?
Sherry, did you get to review the letter that we drafted from the?
Last week.
Yeah, you're happy with that? Good.
Updated.
Good.
Any questions or comments?
This is great. It's great you don't have a match.
No match, yeah.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to change it up a little bit. I'm seeking a motion to approve your request.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you for what you do. CYF, Brooke.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Okay, so we are requesting the approval of the fiscal year 2023-2024 Purchase of Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families, and Wardell &amp; Associates, doing business as Family Intervention Crisis Service.
Any questions or comments of Brooke?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and I'll ask. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase agreement with HIPAA Business Association. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Court Admin, I don't see Sam.
I can take this one for them.
Okay.
Court Administration had a contract that expired in December 31st, 2023 with Betwee Systems and is asking for this, this contract. It's worded slightly different than the prior one. The prior one authorized someone to authorize, or to, for Betwee to move forward with purchases. This one is going to allow them to move forward with a purchase order for parts and additional, and any work that would come under the contract. Simple service agreement, it's $115 per hour plus materials, and they do run into, time to time, where they need their court systems to be serviced by Betwee. So it is a maintenance contract that's very important to them.
Is this, do you know, is this, is that common pleas? Or is this MDJs or covering both?
The, the contract actually would cover anything in the, in the county, but it would specifically fall to any of the dress alarms that might have been installed and need service at any MDJ locations. There's several uses for the contract, and we can think of a couple immediate uses, yes.
Okay, any comments or questions?
I would just add one other item that's under there is the sound systems in the courtroom, which are necessary for, you know, people participating, but also for creating their record.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the service agreement between the County of Blair and Betwee Systems?
Submit.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
District Attorney, Mr. Pete Weeks, sir.
Good afternoon. We are requesting approval of a contract between the County of Blair and Advent eLearning, known as, I believe, Advent Financial LLC. We have, as you, I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but since COVID, or about 2020, many of the service providers who provided things like Men Helping Men, or Anger Management, or other forms of classes or counseling for our defendants have stopped offering those courses. So Advent eLearning allows us to compel defendants, both in the adult and juvenile system, to take certain courses at no cost to the county. And the, the fees for the courses are borne solely by the defendants. We've been court ordering defendants to take certain classes now for three or four months, but we have not been benefiting from that at all. This agreement would allow the county to retain a portion of the fee that the defendants pay. And the intention of the District Attorney's Office is to reserve those monies so we can fully fund juvenile classes because the juvenile probation office was resistant to making juveniles pay for their classes. So what we're trying to do is bank the money that we would make from the adult offenders taking the classes and use that to fund the juvenile classes. The classes are done online. They can be done on a cell phone, a tablet, a computer. This agreement would also allow the court, the District Attorney's Office, and probation, either adult or juvenile, access to track the progress of someone. If there's an essay that's required, we would have access to review the essay to see if it's in compliance with the court order. The classes include Victim Impact Panel, Traffic Safety, Defensive Driving, Alcohol and Substance Abuse, Anger Management, Animal Care, Voting and Outdoor Safety, Bullying Issues for juveniles, Conflict Resolution for juveniles, Corrective Thinking, Financial Crimes, Firearms Responsibility, Harassment, Hunting Responsibility, Impair Driving, Life Skills, Marijuana Education, Parenting, Prostitution, Revenge School, or Revenge Porn, Sexting for juveniles, Shoplifting, Theft, Underage Alcohol and Substance Abuse Class, Alcohol and Substance Abuse Class Level 2, Anger Management Level 2, Impair Driving, also Level 2, Marijuana Education, Theft, and Underage Alcohol and Substance Abuse Level 2. So there's certainly classes that we don't have available right now. It would not, using this service allows us to provide the education for offenders without increasing the personnel in either adult probation or juvenile probation. It literally will be just simply a matter of logging on to an online portal if the agreement is ratified and the officer checking to see whether the offender has completed the required tasks. I know there were some changes that the solicitor wanted, and I think that was to make the venue of any trial by court if there was ever a disagreement, be in the Western District of Pennsylvania, in Johnstown, or in the Court of Common Pleas, Blair County. Advent Financial Systems agreed to those requests. So I would request that the Commissioners approve this contract. I think it's styled in the form of a resolution. Thank you.
Any comments or questions of District Attorney? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agreement between Blair County and Advent Financial LLC. May I have a second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Lindsay.
Requesting approval of an agreement between the county and Copyright Banner Zone down here in Holidaysburg for products and services that are, including but not limited to custom office supplies and printing and duplicating services. And these services would be ordered by purchase order. So this would be open to anybody in the county to take advantage of.
Any comments or questions of Lindsay?
I just have a question. We do have a print shop.
We do.
And I know you know that. And that wasn't intended to sound like I was informing you of something new. Are these items, then, that our print shop cannot make?
Correct. So anybody who would intend to use the service would first need to go to Office Services to make sure that he cannot do that, which is usually color print jobs.
Oh, okay.
Because he doesn't have the color printer.
Okay.
And then would be referred to copyright.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the request for agreement between Blair County and Copyright Banner Zone LLC?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Glenn. Good seeing you again.
Good morning.
That's good.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here today, Item 1, requesting approval of the web hosting and webmaster agreement between the County of Blair on behalf of Fort Roberta and Ingenuity Media. They're a Blair County company, Tyron, in the total amount of $975 for the period of April 15, 2024 through April 14, 2027.
Any comments or questions of Glenn?
Glenn, it just occurred to me, is that $975 a one-time, or is it each year?
One-time.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, now that I'm reading the agreement a little closer, I wanted to make sure that that was correct.
Yeah, that's why I understood it as well.
Good.
And I have a motion to approve.
Wait, can I ask another question? I'm sorry. Typically, we, we do one-year contracts. This appears to be three years. Is that, was this three years before when it was done?
It was a two-year, and they did a good job, and we decided to go three just to not have to bring it up so often.
At the same price?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the web hosting and webmaster agreement between the county and, on behalf of Fort Roberta and Ingenuity Media.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 2, requesting approval of a contract between the County of Blair and Lullamon Construction LLC to excavate a lead mine area located at Fort Roberta in the total amount of $1,800.
Why don't you tell, tell everybody what's going on?
This is related to the finding Fort Roberta with Juniata College. And with the research, they are pretty confident that this is the original lead mine where the soldiers actually mined for the lead during the operation of Lead Mine Fort. So it's very exciting. The Juniata College professors will be there when the excavation takes place, just to sort through. It's a low point, so it was a farm, so there's trash in there mixed with the soil. So they're going to, Lullamon Construction will scrape away that trash and topsoil. The Juniata College students will go through it, make sure there's nothing of significance, and then we'll have the lead mine, original lead mine pit open.
Is it going to be an attraction, then?
Yes, 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 that's the long-term goal, yes.
Yeah, I think that's so cool. It's, it's a great project.
May I have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the contract between the county on behalf of Fort Roberta and Lullamon Construction.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Brian.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
I'm here to request approval of an agreement between County of Blair and MetLife Consumer Services and our identity and fraud protection. This is to enter into an agreement with MetLife to offer an additional voluntary employee paid benefit that provides employees with identity theft, financial fraud, and privacy and device protection, including 24/7/365 customer care. The rates are as indicated, and while this is an annual contract, we do have a three-year rate guarantee on this.
Comments or questions of Brian?
That's great.
Yeah, I just can't, I can't thank you enough, Brian. You've really taken that challenge by the Commissioners to, you know, really improve what we're offering to our employees. And you've taken it and you've run with it. You've gotten great pricing for our employees. And we really have a robust plan for employees that come. Now, it would be at their cost, but we have some really great benefits, pet insurance, and now this legal services. So you've really done a real, real nice job. So thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, we appreciate that. I was just talking to a Commissioner from another county, and we were talking about benefits that are offered, and he was impressed with all the stuff that you've added for us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Mark Taylor. Did you bring the vote today, Mark, to get here? Hovercraft?
We do have some pretty significant flooding going on. Even on I-99 exit 15, we've got cars trapped. This is different than normal. Had a lot of reads, so.
I have before you today, requesting approval of the contract agreement between the County of Blair and Aristatech, Inc., for eight annual licenses of our Peak WMD, which includes Tier 2 integration, commodity hazard vulnerability analysis, and worst-case analysis for planning, exercise, and response for the period of 4/15/24 through 4/14/25 in the total amount of $5,950, of which $4,760 is paid from our HMBP grant funds, and $1,790 come from the LAPC. This is modeling software that we use in the event of a hazardous materials incident. We can all use it for exercises. It gives us real-time weather data, allows us to do modeling as to where the plume might be to help us identify evacuation and a lot of other things regarding to chemical releases. It's used primarily by the Hazmat team, but EMA also has two licenses.
Any comments or questions of Mark? And just so I'm clear, this is all grant money. No, not coming out of the general fund, taxpayer.
HMBP grant at the LAPC funds.
Yeah, LAPC is helpful in a lot of things.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Anita.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Requesting approval of a software support agreement between the County of Blair and Optical Storage Solutions, Inc., for 20 Landex full licenses for the Register of Wills and Recorder of Deeds office in the amount of $23,945, and two full licenses for the Assessment Office in the amount of $1,280, for a total of $25,225 for the period of May 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2025. And just to add, just so you all know, our remote online access that we have brings in over $40,000 a year. That's what it brought in last year, I should say. And our profit, after we would subtract what it costs for our agreement that we're paying for now, is at $15,000. So it does go well.
Yes, this is wonderful to have. I use it frequently. And I know all the title searchers and attorneys are happy that you have it. Thank you.
Also, it looks like it's less expensive than last year.
Reason being, I did eliminate one of the licenses that we had in the one little corner office there. No one had used it for a year, and I thought, you know what? I'm going to just eliminate. So it was cheaper.
Yeah, thank you for looking out for things like that.
$600 and cheaper. Yep, thank you.
And we appreciate it. I think that, you know, the taxpayers should be aware of that, that, you know, when you see things like that, you take action. that, you know, when you see things like that, you take action. So not only the Board of Commissioners, thank you, but the taxpayers of Blair County are thanking you. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions for Anita? Can I get a motion to approve support agreement between County of Blair and Optical Storage Solutions?
I will make the motion.
I'll second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks.
Now look at Nicole for Commissioners.
So two things for your consideration today. Requesting approval of a certificate of substantial completion for the Blair County Parking Garage Stair Tower Repair Project. That would be backdated to October 20th, 2023, when we feel that substantial completion was obtained. There still is some outstanding, as you're aware, some outstanding warranty items, as well as pay application items that need to be produced to call the project complete. But for the most part, all work and everything associated with the stair tower project physically on property on site. It was complete October 20th, so looking for your approval for that signature.
I have a couple of questions. I'm concerned about doing this. My only concerns involve, first of all, what is the likelihood of our getting the last items completed? The warranty has been an issue for a long, long time. And if we go along and approve the certificate of substantial completion, are we going to lose our opportunity at some point to continue to pursue those remaining items? As well as the issue of the penalty and how, and whether or not that's impacted by this particular certificate?
Yeah, and so had we been working on this through real, let's call it real time. So if this would have come to us in October 20th, 2023, you'll see attached to the certificate is a final inspection memorandum. So it does have a final punch list that says, you know, we really can't get to final completion until these items are done. And some of those have been completed now, but there are the items that you're talking about, the general items.
Right, I saw the follow-up note from the company saying that he had done a couple of them.
Correct. And we are working with both, on the payment bond side for the pay application issues that are happening. So we have the bond, the certi company involved in those, as well as the performance bond for the performance issues of the project. So we do have the bond company on our side.
So the bond company is not going to go away?
Yeah, this was actually, they were actually requiring this document to then say that there were still items outstanding. This is kind of our way of saying to the bond company, here's what we, we've reached substantial completion. Here's what is still outstanding. Can we please continue to work with you down this path on these items here? So I believe that everything is in line. We've talked this over with the bond company. They are assuring us that this document is fine, as well as the prior solicitor and also the engineers agree that this would still be fine. We can still do work through all the other formalities as we still have an outstanding balance, that we have not paid them, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we still had those options available.
And if you'd like to, you know, explore those on your own individually, we can certainly hold this till next week, if that's the direction we're going with the meeting schedule. I'm completely fine with that. Another week is not going to be, you know, another week is not going to hurt anything, but if you prefer to hold off on approval.
I prefer to hold off, unless.
That's fine. Yep, we'll hold that for old business on Tuesday's agenda, next Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think it's the following Thursday, isn't it? I was just writing that it's going to be rolled up, and we'll talk about that at the conclusion of the meeting. The second item for your consideration today is requesting approval of a grant agreement extension between the County of Blair and the Department of Economic Development for the Phase 1 feasibility study for the Blair County Prison. This is changing the grant completion date to June 30th, 2024. All other terms of the grant agreement are in full effect, and no other changes are made to the grant agreement. This is simply extending that reimbursement time period.
Any comments or questions? I'll make a motion to approve the extension.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any old business?
None that I am aware of.
Okay, this were, more for Kay, I guess, than.
And Nate, yeah.
So you saw something a little different today at the Commissioners' meeting, and that is normally Tuesday, we would listen to the requests, and then we would vote on those requests on Thursday. Today, we not only heard them, but we voted on them as well. The reasoning for that is we're currently, we're listening, and we're currently looking at doing Commissioners' meeting once a week instead of twice a week. And that may vary either on a Tuesday or a Thursday, based on our schedules. So this is something new. This was the first time that we tried it. So we're just letting everybody know that this is the format that we're currently trying to see if this is something that we will adopt or not, or make changes to see how it goes with Department Heads, so. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next Board of Commissioners' meeting will be held on?
Thursday, April 11th.
Thursday, April 11th, at 1:00 p.m.
Yes.
Did you get that, Kay?
You're not meeting next Tuesday.
Correct. We have a quorum issue on next Tuesday, yes. So we opted for the Thursday.